It's February 23rd. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Canton Township on February 23rd at 6:31 PM. So Clerk Segrist, can you please call and roll and everybody please state your location?
Borninsky.
I'm here and I'm in my home in Canton Township.
Foster.
Good evening from my home in Canton Township.
Enguli.
Good evening. I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
And Hudek.
Here at the township offices.
Segrist is here and Canton Slavens.
Good evening here in Canton.
Snyderman.
I am also here in Canton.
All right, great, thank you. So we had a call to order. Can I please have motion to move into closed session to discuss pending litigation Marinelli versus Canton and Boylan versus Canton?
So moved.
Support.
So you guys please call roll.
All right. One moment, sorry. Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Enguli.
Hi.
And Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So we are going to go to closed session and then if you wouldn't mind, Jee, I'm going to make you co-host while I leave the session. Can I have a motion to end closed session?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go from closed into open session.
For. You clerk secrets, can you please take roll call?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Enguli.
Hi.
And Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes of February 2nd, 9th, 13th, 14th, and 16th, 2021?
If it would please, the supervisor, shall we adopt the agenda prior to the minutes?
I'm sorry, you're right. I skipped the agenda. Okay, I would like to do that we adopt the agenda with the additions of G0A, which is consider approval of settlement agreement and release in the matters of Marinelli versus Canton Township at Al and Boylan versus Canton Township, and G0B, consider approval of a budget amendment, purchase order, and contract award for an owner's representative for the capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk secrets, please call roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Enguli.
Aye.
And Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Motion approved. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes now of February 2nd, 9th, 13th, 14th, and 16th, 2021?
Madam Supervisor, I move to the board approve the minutes from February. The meeting is held on February 2nd, 9th, 13th, 14th, and 16th.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk secrets, can I please have a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Enguli.
Aye.
And Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved. At this point, I would like to read a statement based on COVID vaccination registration that happened yesterday. So I'd like to do this at this point in the meeting. So I'd like to say that Canton Township is proud to say that 1,000 seniors were able to schedule appointments to be vaccinated later this week on Thursday and Friday. With all available spots filled, our call center is no longer taking calls. We ask that you visit our website to be placed on the waitlist. Canton residents should continue to register for vaccines through healthcare providers in the local pharmacies. This pandemic has been a challenging time for all of us. It has strained our individual connection to each other and our community, and that was evident by the amazing phone calls we were able to have with our older residents on Monday. We are happy to offer options for individuals who feel isolated and struggle with virtual technology offered by other options. Some of the residents we're calling today and our employees were helping them get on the waitlist. While I understand the frustration of some of those calling to make appointments, not having an adequate supply of the vaccine in our state and our county has made this process incredibly difficult for our seniors and their families. The response that we received to our vaccine clinic was incredible, with our call center receiving over 1 million calls in a six-hour period. It is our hope that the extraordinary response will make it possible for Wayne County to hold larger and more frequent clinics in the very near future. With 43 communities in Wayne County, we are grateful that Commissioner Melissa Daub was also able to secure the doses she did for her district of Canton, Plymouth Township, and the city of Plymouth, as well as Warren Evans. The planning between the communities this weekend was remarkable. One major challenge is that we have no control over how many vaccine doses will be offered or when they will be offered, but we will eagerly take whatever the county is able to provide and do our best to deliver that service to our residents. Everyone wants to keep their loved ones safe, and the limited access to vaccinations has been challenging for all of us. We can celebrate the fact that at the end of the week, 1,000 more seniors will be vaccinated, and through cooperative efforts between Canton and Wayne County, we hope to vaccinate many more soon. Canton will always welcome any opportunity from the county or state for additional vaccination distribution. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. So do I see any hands for public comment? Looking right now at the attendees, please raise your hand or you can hit star six to raise your hand and make a public comment. Okay, seeing none. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is payment of the bills.
Yeah, Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
For. Thank you. Clerk secrets, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Enguli.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Canton Cares Fund. So I'm going to promote Beth Mead, and she has a presentation. My panelists, and Laura Mortier. And we know our Laura and Beth. She is. Hello, Laura and Beth, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Madam Supervisor, I do have a PowerPoint. Do I have the ability to share the screen?
Let me see. I will make sure you do. Go ahead. Great, we can see it. Thank you.
Great. So, good evening, everyone. I am Laura Mortier, and I am the current Chair of the Canton Cares Advisory Board, and presenting with me tonight is Beth Mead, the President of the Canton Community Foundation. And we are here tonight to go over a little bit about what the Canton Cares Fund is, the history behind it, and what we have been doing the past year. So the Canton Cares Fund was established in 2019 as a 501(c)(3) in partnership with the Canton Community Foundation, and approved by the board at that time. So I know some of you are new to the board, so this did generate with that board back in 2017. Our advisory board meets four times a year and is responsible for raising funds and awarding funds for very specific areas that support both Canton Township programs and Canton community members. Those different areas that are designated within the fund is a youth fund, primarily benefits our youth programs here in the township, as well as those for disabled youth and adults through our therapeutic recreation program, our seniors, veterans, responses to community crisis, employee recognition, and election scholarships. So the fund was created for many reasons. One of the biggest ones was an inspiration to serve community members in times of crisis. One of the biggest inspirations came from years ago where the township had found out about older woman who was living at home with no running water, and there was a lot of scrambling to figure out how we could help that resident. So really, the fund kind of was inspired by a situation like that. Let's put something together so we have something in place so that once an opportunity like this arises, Canton can respond to it quickly. There was also a need because so many of our programs and community members, our police and fire awards, recreation programs, employee picnics, we work for all of those different types of things. We were constantly soliciting sponsorships and looking for grants. So this opportunity kind of put all of that together for us. It was put in a place where the money is safe, it's tracked very well. It makes it easier for us to ask people. It's coming from a reputable foundation. People are knowing where their money is going. Donors get tax breaks because it's through the foundation, and it's cleaner for us to do it all in one place. One of the other benefits of it and reasons behind it, and the Leisure Services Department has benefited a ton from this, is a lot of the times when our programs go to apply for different grants and sponsorships, we are not eligible because things like our Youth and Teen Center or our therapeutic programs or our senior programs, because they fall under the township, they're governmental programs, and therefore we don't qualify for the nonprofit title. But because we have partnered with the Canton Community Foundation and this fund, those programs then qualify for those types of grants, and that honestly has brought in thousands of dollars, specifically, I know, and I can speak on behalf of Leisure Services Programming. And I'll just give one example is the Block Youth and Teen Center has benefited a ton because Masco Corporation annually donates $10,000 to support the Lead Like a Girl Women Empowerment Program and our Transpire Program for LGBTQ Youth. They have to give to a nonprofit organization, so $15,000 annually then is able to come to the block because we're able to put these funds in the fund within the foundation. The other benefit too is if you're looking to kickstart a program and don't have all the funds yet, and depending where we're at in our township fiscal year, the money is able to sit in that fund until we're ready to use it, so we don't lose it. So that's kind of the history and inspiration behind creating the fund. Our mission, which I talked a little bit about specifically, is making sure that the funds go to and meet the mission of youth, disabled, community crisis, personal loss, and our seniors and vets. So that is the official one that is in our bylaws for you. A little bit about our membership. Our advisory board, right now our bylaw states that there are no less than five members of that with the representation of the Canton community, and are appointed and confirmed by the supervisor and then the board, which I know all of you, I think at your last meeting, just reconfirmed for the upcoming year. So just to kind of go over who currently sits on the board is myself as the chairperson and employee of Leisure Services, Christina Wilson, who is our vice chair and is the owner of Sweetwater Coffee and Tea, Beth Mead, who is on the call with us today from the Canton Community Foundation, Tammy Hagerty, owner of Jacob Matthews Jeweler, and Tammy Brown, owner of Farm Bureau Insurance. So those were the board members that were appointed back in 2017 and have been recently renewed. Right now, in our last meeting and conversations, we are looking to transition Beth out of the position of a voting member and to sit truly as an advisor from the foundation to the current advisory board. As well as, our group is going to be identifying an application process where community members can apply to be a part of this, and then vetted by the supervisor and appointed. But that way too, it increases our diversity. We're really meeting the needs of the community ultimately, right, to, you know, make our charitable and meet our charitable goals. I know there is, or has been, a little concern with there being a ton of township employee involvement, a perception. I understand all of that. But a personal opinion and as well as I can speak on behalf of our advisory, we do feel there's a responsibility and an obligation to have some sort of representation of the township on this current board, and I'm not saying this personally. It doesn't have to be me, but our township employees and people that oversee these things have insight on our programs and our needs and our direct connection with the community, and so many of the things that I'll talk about later that we've been able to give to have actually been through like our connections with public safety, again, because they're connected with the community needs. So, you know, so many of those things, it's the police coming to us and say, hey, this is what needs to be done. If it meets our mission, we're able to give it. So I do think at least one of the representation on this moving forward should come from the township, just because we do have that insight. Some of our fundraising efforts for the past few years, well, two of our biggest fundraisers, we've partnered with Chicks for Charity. One, because they have a pretty big reach, and two, they match a lot of the funds when you do a fundraiser. So we did a trivia night in 2019, and that went to the Lead Like a Girl and Youth Fund. And then just in 2020, before everything shut down, we did a chili cook-off at the summit that benefited the Police and Fire Fund. We also, what has been a big help, is letters to organizations have gone out on behalf of the Canton Cares Fund, soliciting those types of donations and grants, and there's been like a nice like sell sheet of the different levels and what the benefits are and what you can donate to. We've also done employee denim days that have benefited the Canton Cares Fund. And what is really nice is that there are all of these different funds that are earmarked, so if you're finding an organization or company that's very passionate about seniors, then they specifically then can earmark that money, and the foundation ensures that that exact money then is going to senior programming. Otherwise, it can go in unrestricted funds and we can use those that don't necessarily fit one of those categories, but if somebody earmarks that, then the foundation ensures that that money is going to those types of programming. And then we are working with Canton Cable right now to create social media types of PSAs, so like 20 to 30-second commercials that we're trying to really tug at the heartstrings, and the goal is to really get residents involved, and for a small fee, your money can go to this. So for example, it would be for $150, you can sponsor a child with a disability to attend a week-long of summer camp, and that commercial would show, you know, children at summer camp and the benefits of that for a child with disabilities. So we're going to try to create these commercials to create awareness in the community that community members can give right to their own backyard if they somehow want to help out members right here. And who we've helped. So there's a ton of different people listed here. Like I mentioned, I want to highlight a couple of them, one of them being the big money that we've been able to get from Masco to the Youth and Teen Center. Michael can speak a little bit more about this too. We've been able to give four election scholarships to youth that have volunteered as inspectors during our elections, and then we really wanted to highlight too our crisis response. There, two of them have been things that public safety and the fire department have notified us of. There was a young boy who witnessed a very traumatic experience that had to do with his father, and the police officer that was on call purchased some supplies for the young boy that he needed out of his own pocket. Well, when we got wind of that, got the receipt, the Canton Cares Fund then was able to reimburse that officer for the money he paid out of his pocket for emergency response for this young boy. There was also a recent house fire that we got word of and were able to get money to Police and Fire to be able to purchase the supplies that that family needed immediately. So this fund being set up, we're able to do that pretty quickly. And then I am going to hand it over to Beth. Our next few slides really talk about the funds, where it's held, monies that we have raised.
Thanks, Laura. So I want to start by saying that we started this fund in late 2017, so that's why you see on this slide that we didn't get much money. It was originally started with a direct mail letter campaign, which went out to a lot of area businesses and I believe some residents, but Laura can correct me on that if that's not the case. It was signed by the supervisor's office just to kind of introduce this new program that was running through the foundation, not through the township. Beyond that first letter, it has been communications through this committee that we've gone through and really promoted the different things that we're doing. So you can see, we started with a goal of looking at your budget and seeing of these six different silos, what's the budget that we need to come up with? How much money do we need to raise? So our goal was about $46,000 a year. So we've fallen a little bit short, but the good thing is we haven't used all that money every year. So you are sitting in a good position. Obviously, the second year in 2018, we raised about $17,000. This is just annually. This is not cumulative, obviously. So 28,000 in 2019, and then 12,000, over 12,000 even in 2020 during a bad time. So we feel that this has been a really successful program. It's been a great way, as Laura said, not only for you to take advantage of our (c)(3) status, but also for somebody, for a resident who says, especially during times like this, I want to find a way to give back. You can't give directly to your employees. You can't give directly to the Police and Fire, but you can give through the Canton Cares Fund, knowing that it's managed by an organization that has their national standards accreditation. We've been around for almost 30 years now, and, you know, the money is really working for the community. Laura, if you want to go to the next slide. Oh, the other thing I did want to mention is, over these three years, we've received about 75 gifts. The average gift is about $840, with the median being $300. Some are from individuals, some are from businesses. As Laura mentioned, we've gotten some nice grants from Masco that have really benefited the children's program. The second slide, there's a lot of information on this slide, so you can see that at the bottom of the grid are the six different categories that we established early on with this committee, with them being the scholarship, employee recognition, police and fire, senior programming, disaster relief. Camp Able is something that was kind of in addition to youth program because some people said, I want it specifically to go to Camp Able. So we were able to put those dollars into that category. And then, as Laura mentioned, we've got this unrestricted category for people who said, I don't really care where my funds go. I just want it to go to wherever it's needed, when it's needed. So the far left bar, which is the bright red bar, is the amount that we've had donated to date. The second one, the yellow bar, is what we've spent so far out of that category. And then the other most important one is the light blue, which is the balance that we currently have there. Now, you'll notice that some of them go into the negative where it says the balance budgeted, and that's because we want to keep it. We want to keep each of these categories at whatever our budgeted amount was. So, for example, in the Police and Fire, we assume that $6,000 is going to be the need annually, so we want to try and keep it at that level. So we've fallen slightly short, but we can draw out of that unrestricted fund. So currently, you've got almost $31,000 sitting in the fund, ready to be used. This committee has been very diligent on how they look at an opportunity that comes in or a need that comes in. There have been some that we have turned down. We are very conscious of the money that's being used and want to make sure that it's really making the best impact it can in the community. So I will pass it back to Laura for her to tell you about our look ahead for 2021 and how we want to build on this fund.
So like I mentioned, our biggest thing is kind of promoting some sponsorships. So I said those PSAs, I gave the example of the camper ones. We're going to do a specific one for at-risk, low-income teens. Our TR camp, that's a therapeutic recreation program, and then highlight seniors, where saying some X amount of money could then supply a senior in the community with a summit membership, and that would promote health and wellness for the senior. And then as well as doing one for X amount of dollars can help a family in crisis in the township. And again, when those get donated, they're earmarked for when that situation arises. The biggest way to get money is to continue to fundraise. So two ideas that have been thrown out there is to do another chili cook-off. We had a really big success with that the first time we did it, but potentially partnering with the farmer's market for the last one in the fall, where we already have a captive audience and can do the fundraiser with that. And then there was the idea too of a comedy night in the park. All of these would be planned for the fall when we know that that could be done, you know, a little bit more safely and outside and, you know, physically distant. And then finally, one of our biggest pushes for this year is going to be employee education. Like I had mentioned earlier, we think it's important for the township to be involved, but even more important that we feel like every employee should know about this fund, because again, we're the ones interacting, right? Whether it's at the front desk of the summit or it's at the clerk's office, we're seeing residents and hearing their stories. So if we're able to know what's going on in the community, then we can refer somebody to this fund or have a connection with a local business that wants to donate can help this. So we think our next big step is really employee education on this as well. So that's kind of all we have for you, and we're willing to take any questions you may have for us.
Great. Do we have any questions by anybody? Anyone on the board with questions? Kate, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Laura and Beth. That was really quite a lot of information about the fund, and I appreciate your coming tonight to help us understand. I was just, this is just a request. I was just wondering if you could send us that presentation. I would like to look over it again. Thank you.
Supervisors, the best to send to Amy to send out, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then we'll work too with you moving forward about the application process and putting a call out for more members of our board too. So we'll be in touch with the supervisor's office to work on that as well.
Great, yes, because then we have a committee that interviews. I think it's in the focus, isn't it?
I think it's coming, yes, coming up.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just say it was a great presentation, and I will say my involvement in the foundation has shown me that there's different funds with different level of involvement, different committees that stay involved and really stay on top of things, and some that we have to push and try to get there. And I don't think, I think Beth would agree, this one has never been a problem in terms of getting them to do the work that it takes to make it a successful fund. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, great presentation. Does anyone else have anything? Michael?
I will just speak briefly to, well, thank you for the lovely presentation. And I'll speak briefly to the election scholarship that we had established initially in 2018. It's I've been able to brag about that across the state of Michigan, especially during pandemic, when it was, when people were struggling with recruiting election inspectors, which was initially the tool. It was a way to try to get young folks to participate in the administration of our elections, because volunteerism and civic duty is something that has, it's generational, unfortunately, and we are really trying to combat that both for the health of our country and our democracy, but also, you know, because especially during pandemic, older people were, I think, a little bit more inclined to be protective of their health as they should be, and you know, because especially during pandemic, older people were, I think, a little bit more inclined to be protective of their health as as they should be and but it was really awesome um, to take people with a lot of experience working the elections and newer folks, younger kids, students who um, got to kind of learn and work alongside. Bring some of their tech skills and learn a little bit of patience about um, measuring twice and cutting once from the people they were working alongside. It was really cool uh, to put that to use. It was a great program uh, that helped us recruit a number of students over the years to participate in administering the elections and uh, and I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful for that, for that partnership that we were able to to establish. And like I said, I I have brought it up at um, previous uh, clerk institutes throughout the state of Michigan. I have put it on um, communications with the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, given it to clerks for ideas about ways to get students involved, um, younger folks involved. And for those who don't know uh, the details, um, you know, the idea was for students who have the day off from school. If they work on election day, not only do they receive a stipend, they get paid for working a half a day. They also have an opportunity to participate in a, in a scholarship contest. They would write an essay about what they learned through their training, about election security. And in the age of misinformation, I think it's important that we really, really force these kids to learn how to critically think and be very suspicious of the information that they're taking in and what they're using to form their view of the world and their opinions. And um, and um, and then that, so those essays will be judged and the first and second place were people who came in would get a scholarship that they could apply to to their education. So the day after school, check. Looks great on a resume, check. Get a little money in your pocket, no matter what, check. And you got an opportunity to uh, to win a scholarship. So it was just a great, great opportunity and and I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you. I can also say that um, because of this program, this is something that we promote in other communities. So whenever I go speak in other communities, I always talk about this because I think it's a great way because the police and fire and those of you in the youth programs and those at the summit, you're the ones who know what the needs are in your community and with your residents. And if we find out about it, we don't find out about it until the eleventh hour. So and and as Laura said, it's great to know that very, very quickly we can act to get the assistance to somebody that's in need. Thank you. Any other questions or statements? Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Okay, you have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is by Jade Smith. Um, he's going to discuss planning and landscape architecture services that will be um, an RBA in a few weeks. He just wanted to give some information now, in case anyone had any questions. Jade, I will, you have, do you have a presentation?
No, I do not.
Okay. Okay.
So I will kind of go through. I did, I hope that everybody received the memo that I sent out over the weekend in regards to the planning services. Um, if you have that, I'm going to speak from that document. Actually, can we promote Patrick? He's probably listed under Canton MSD. He may have some input on this and you may have some questions at the end. But I I have to say before we go through the information that I wrote in the memo, this is something that I've been looking at um, for close to eight months now um, in regards to the planning division itself and how to best serve the Canton, to to serve Canton Township and then also um, alleviate um, some of the the ups and downs that come with uh, Planning Department from Landscape Architecture Services and the Planning Services itself. So I'll kind of go through the the history real quick and then um, some of the benefits that we see from moving from hiring a full-time employee to contracting with a couple of firms uh, to provide planning services. So in 2019, uh, we had two planners that retired from the division. Uh, one of those positions uh, was a landscape architect. Um, and that's really all that they concentrated on was the landscape architect services. The other was the actual community planner position itself, which Patrick was recently promoted to. We did fill one of those positions with a full-time planner and the other position is still open and vacant. After talking with Patrick and letting him get his feet wet, we talked through some of the things that we could utilize in the planning department, how we could, again, like I said, best serve the township. It in in, and also keep in mind that it Canton Township is a growing community and right now it looks like there's no end. Well, if you, if you do want to look towards the future, probably in about ten years, there will be an end and we need to make sure that we're prepared for that. And we've experienced some examples in the most, in the recent months where we've actually needed a high demand of planning services and we've needed a high demand of landscape architecture services. And that's actually going to get worse as we start to see more of the subdivisions that have coming to an end and starting to be built out where we need the landscape architect services. And as you can see from almost every board meeting, except for this one tonight, we have probably three to four, if not five, planning items that come before you for approval. So it's a very, very busy time within the planning department. So one of the things that we were looking at was, like I said, bringing in um, a firm that could provide the planning services, that would be able to provide experienced planners onsite. And that could exist with various different types of planning needs, whether that was reviewing plans, waiting on um, developers or residents at the counter, um, and helping just Patrick with daily planning tasks. The other is the landscape architecture, which architect was, which is also um, could, is going to provide support at the counter and then also will help us with the inspection. Um, you okay, Michael? Okay. And also provide us with onsite inspection services, reviewing plans, helping prepare designs and provide the consultation services at the counter. This is one of the things that we're starting to see and Supervisor Graham Hoodak can uh, can attest to this too. We are seeing a large number of homeowners associations that are starting to become um, owner-run as opposed to developer-run. And we're seeing a transition where we're needing to see some of these landscape architect uh, in inspection services. We we need those in the field. So what we, where we ended up in, oh, and I guess I should say two other things too. One of the other things is there's a lot of other divisions within Canton Township that utilize planning services outside. I know Leisure Services uses it for their Parks and Rec Master Plan and actually one of the firms that we spoke with, actually that we did interview has done that for us in the past. They also can help us with our tree maintenance pro, tree maintenance program and help within our parks um, with that as well. So bringing in a planning and and landscape architect service consultant is actually going to help across the township. And by doing it this way, we actually can service them with one service agreement. And they've gone through the vetting process. So we did go out for RFP. Gosh, I think it was in late December, early January, conducted um, five interviews. We had five respondents conducted five interviews. And at the end of the day and at the end of the interviews, we were very impressed with the two of the firms, one to provide the planning services and one to provide the landscape architect services. And I'm going through this rather quickly because then obviously we're going to open up for some discussion. In this, in what we're recommending, what want to recommend is a professional services agreement, which is already an established agreement that's been approved through the township's legal council. And it's currently used in the engineering department for all of the um, engineering firms that are approved and that we utilize for various uh, utility and road projects in in engineering functions within the township and also within the building department for seasonal inspection services. So this is not anything that is new to the township. And in fact, it's something that works very well in some of our divisions. So this is, but it is a change for the planning division. So what we are wanting to do is present that to you and make that change and have a discussion about um, the board's thought about moving that way and within the planning department. That was kind of a a lot of information and it was pretty quick. I don't know, Patrick, if you have anything more you want to add?
Thank you. I think that summarizes uh, everything pretty well in terms of uh, where we started and try to explore some of the needs of uh, MSD and the planning division and in finding a way forward. And so with that RFP, we got a lot of great proposals. We had a lot of great interviews with uh, some very highly qualified firms. And we had a team of people that helped us with the evaluation. We had um, the other planner in the planning division assisted with the interviews. And we also had um, a representative from finance. So we had a team of people scoring the proposals and uh, we went with the scores and and averaged them out. It was pretty clear, uh, one firm for each of the services.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? So you'll be seeing this on an RBA in a couple of weeks. Steven, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm also trying to keep my dog from barking here. So uh, I might have to go back. Well, that means I'd have to leave to go get the treats.
Oh.
But let's see if I can get through this. Um, so interesting topic. One, the first question I have is um, how many planners and landscape architects do you have on staff? Total and um, and is it just one planner and is it, is it one architect, landscape architect that this would replace?
So the the makeup of the planning division now is the community planner, a planner one. We have two clerical and then we have a GIS specialist that works out of the planning division. Previously, there was another planning position, um, and it was really dedicated to landscape architecture. So the the beauty of this as well is we're actually getting quite a bench of planners and landscape architects from either, from each firm. So as opposed to saying that we would only fill it with one more employee that would be there specialized in planning services or landscape architecture, we actually with the one firm would get um, almost twenty planners that are work for the firm, some that may have skill levels at various levels, or if somebody's on vacation, we still have that service that's going to be available to us. And then on landscape architect side, I believe there were three landscape architects that worked for the firm that we are um, that we were looking at. Was that correct, Patrick? Three?
Yes.
Yeah. So so we're we're in essence getting a team of twenty-three people to help us provide the service um, to the township.
I I, yes, it sounds, it makes it flexible, which is very, very nice. Um, I uh, I I think you know, part of my history with these types of um, ventures have been good and bad. So um, obviously it it have to have some, something in the contract where we could step away from it if it's not working out. At times, also um, personally, I I want us to make sure that we're a good, responsible employer for our community. And I want to understand, you know, how the this affects, affect, affects that. So it's probably something we may have to discuss more. Just in terms of making sure that I, you know, and usually it's when you talk about doing these types of things, it's it's some of the services that are lo- lower paid in the, in a, or an organization like a municipality that get to go to these types of firms. And sometimes I feel like they end up taking away from the employees that end up going to these firms or do, or working for these firms compared to what a municipal um, organization can give them. These services are probably higher paid and so I I'm not as concerned about that. And in these firms, they're probably reputable. I'm sure they're reputable firms. So but I I would just want to make sure that I have that confidence. So it's something we can discuss a little more.
Yeah, just to comment on that because I know there was a concern and this supervisor and I did speak about that too in regards to um, the position that isn't going to be filled. And the perception that that could create, um, this is a merit position. That um, that is a, that is the current open position. And there, it it's a when you, when you look at positions where someone could look at this as if we're taking a position away from being able to be promoted into it, this actually takes some skill that nobody else within the, within the township right now has and that there wouldn't, it wouldn't it wouldn't lend itself to that because we would still have to go outside to fill the position. So I don't think we're taking away any opportunity from anybody within the township itself. And then also within MSD on a much broader scale, we did add two additional positions um, in the engineering division. So at the end of the day, we still have added positions and staff within um, the MSD division overall within the last twelve months.
Good to know. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Tanya?
So um, I just was wondering um, cost-wise, um, this um, are what you're thinking, is it going to be very similar to disposition and the cost for disposition? Or are you thinking, you know, this is?
It should be actually a cost savings to the township. Um, I've been so, when I talked with Patrick and Patrick has a really good idea in regards to the landscape architect services that we do and the inspections that we do, that that's going to be a cost neutral. And we're going to be bringing um, before you um, an inspection fee for any of the developers or any of the the landowners that are, that need that service, that they will pay a fee just as if like a building department official is going to go out and do an inspection. And then that fee will be assessed and will cover the cost of the actual landscape architect. So that will actually be a cost-neutral um, service that we will, that we will have. In regards to the planning services, I spoke with Director Trumbull in regards to what the total uh, dollars were for the salary and benefits of the open position. And we are going to recommend doing a not-to-exceed dollar amount for the contract, which will be less than what the salary and benefits would be for the position that is open now. Probably considerably less. Patrick and I are still talking about what that number um, should look like, but we think it's going to be considerably less than what the uh, salary and benefits would be of filling the position internally. And then you've got to look at legacy costs too, and I I know Director Trumbull can speak to that as well. One of the other um, things that came out through the um, through the interview process, which we thought was, is a plus and it's something we've been talking about within our, our divisions because we deal with the public so much and the diversity of our community is changing. And sometimes there's a language barrier. The, the firm that we've actually identified for the planning services, the representative that is going to be our um, our, our, our point of of um, of support from that firm is actually, is is diverse as well. And so we're going to see that we're going to be able to actually service our residents even better. And there, if we do need some assistance, probably within any department within the um, the township, they will be able to help um, any, any, any department uh, converse with uh, some of our residents where we sometimes struggle. And then sometimes that, that's a real struggle within the building and uh, development uh, stages of bringing businesses in and working with some of our local business owners.
Yeah, I I read through the document and I think it's a great idea to bring in varied experience for in in place of one person. And I also agree with Steven that we need to be cautious in long-term agreements because sometimes uh, we we see that with our own homeowners associations when we employ these type of firms. They um, some of them don't turn out that well. I was the president of the previous homeowners association. It had a really bad experience. So um, so I hope we can have some terms in there that maybe can make.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And I think the the, the, the services agreement that we have, that Kristen, um, I've, I've talked with her about that and it's what we will model our agreements off of. Um, we'll have obviously an out clause um, on the township's behalf. And then I I can say that the two firms that we are looking at have a long history of working with the township in the past in various capacities and also have worked um, Patrick came from the private sector in the planning world and I've come from other municipalities and we both have worked with these firms in the past as well in other capacities. So I I, I'm very confident in the, the firms that we're, that we're picking. And and hopefully you will be as confident as well once you meet them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Hey, um, Director Smith, do you have any idea of how long you would um, have a contract with these firms for? Like, are you thinking just a one-year, like, try them out or multiple years or, or? Or, or have you even gotten that far yet?
Yeah, so we're talking with them about that. And some of them gave us different proposals within their RFPs. The firms that we have, that we've gone through, and I know the, some of the, the veteran board members were here when they did this for engineering. It was before my time. Those were five-year agreements, but there is that out clause, like I said, within the agreement. So if it wasn't working out, I don't remember off the top of my head if it was 60 days notice. But I, I will go back and verify that. But there is a, there is a clause in there that the township can cease with, with written notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Summer?
I just wanted to say really quickly, as a newer planning commissioner, I've been to, I think, to, to the planning commission meeting so far. But there is a lot that's coming on the agendas every month. And so I think that this would be a great thing to support the planning department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael?
I'm additionally in support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, just as Director Smith also said, we are dealing with a lot of residents who are transitioning from developer to homeowners association ownership. And there's a lot of expertise needed in that to help that transition run smoothly. You're seeing that right now.
Yeah, one of the first tasks, if we get this approved, I think, I can't remember the date, Patrick. But we already have a pretty, a pretty big meeting set up with a, a current homeowners association that's trying to convert and having issues with the developers and a lot of it's around landscaping. So we've already got a task for them lined up.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we're going to be moving to the general calendar. And G0A and G0B are first ones that we added on. So I, the first item is G0A. Consider approval of settlement agreement and release in the matters of Marinelli versus Canton Township at L and Boylan versus Canton Township. Can I please have a motion?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the attached settlement agreement and release and authorize Corporation Counsel Kristen Cole to sign on behalf of Canton Township.
Port.
Thank you. Tentative settlements have been reached in the matters of James Marinelli versus Canton Township at L and Carrie Boylan versus Canton Township. The board is being asked to consider and approve the attached settlement agreement and release, which resolves all issues and requires the entry of stipulated dismissals of both case, excuse me, cases with the Wayne County Circuit Court. Counsel Cole, do you have anything to add?
No, we discussed the matter in closed session, went into a little more detail about the negotiations leading to the settlement. We believe it's reasonable under all the circumstances. And as Mr. Young indicated to the board, it's our recommendation that the board accept the settlement as proposed.
Great, thank you. Any questions or statements? All right, thank you. Clark Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
And Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is G0B. Consider approval of a budget amendment purchase order and contract award for an owner's representative for the capital improvement plan. I have a motion, please.
Ma'am Supervisor, I'm going to do this in the form of one motion. I move to award a contract and approve a purchase order for the owner's representative services for multi-year capital improvement plan management to Plant Moran, CRESA, at 27400 Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan 48034, in the amount of $163,144 to be paid from the account number listed for Community Improvement Professional Services. And further, I move to approve the following, the attached 2021 budget amendment.
The port. Thank you. The capital improvement plan is a $16 million bond dedicated to repairing and replacing capital throughout the township. Due to the amount of projects, it was determined that project management assistance is needed from an outside source. Therefore, a request for proposal was advertised for owner's representative services for multi-year capital improvement plan management. And companies were interviewed. A selection committee consisting of finance, leisure services and municipal services staff is recommending to award a contract to Plant Moran Cressa as the owner's representative for select capital improvement plan projects to be paid from 246261.8010050, Community Improvement Professional Services and the total project amount of $320,388. A 2021 budget amendment of $163,144 is necessary. It will require a purchase order increase for years 2022, the amount not to exceed $60,691 2023, and the amount not to exceed $42,242 in 2024, and the amount not to exceed $54,311. An agreement between Canton Township and Plant Moran Cressa will be reviewed and approved by Canton's legal staff prior to being signed by the township supervisor. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything and who do you want me to promote?
Certainly. If you could promote Brad Sharp and Andy Fontaine. Andy is with Plant Moran Cressa. Brad Sharp is our operations, our, our project manager within leisure services. Questions, we may have answers coming from Director Smith and Director Trumbull. They were also on the selection committee for this project. So, but the, and the long and short of it is we have $16 million worth of projects and we have our everyday operations as well. So we're not increasing staffing, kind of similar to the, the, the idea that Director Smith was just talking about for planning services. This would be a similar idea for project management and that we're not increasing staffing. And this is, you know, that gives a, a short-term fix to this problem of managing a variety of projects all at the same time. But with that, if I haven't confused you enough, I'll be happy to answer any questions or direct them to the appropriate person.
Any questions? Trustee Tanya?
Thank you, Director Homberger. I just had, I was just trying to understand this RBA. So what we are saying is instead of the leisure services or municipal services or the township managing the project, because we have to deal with the day-to-day work of the township. We are assigning this project management for all the capital improvements that we are doing to, to plant more. Is that right?
Correct. But they'll still be working as part of the, our product management team. We're still going to have our internal CIP committee with finance, municipal services, leisure services. And part of that team will be Plant Moran Cressa sitting at the table. And they'll be helping us develop the RFPs and bids, managing the, the contracts, helping us to put together board actions for approving different projects. So we're, it's not like we're just handing it off to them and they're running with the football and we, we have nothing to do with it. They're going to be sitting at the table. It's basically a contract staff member to sit on our CIP team. And similar to the project that Director Smith was talking about, they have a, a variety of expertise. And instead of bringing in one person with one specific set of skills, Cressa has several staff members with a lot of variety of skills that can help us in different ways. And depending on the project or what we're looking for, they've got a finance person, an engineer, they've got a lot of different resources.
Okay, thanks for making me understand.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Borninsky?
Hi, I just wanted to say that I've had experience working with Plant Moran Cressa through the school district and specifically with Paul Wells, and I saw his name on here. So I am very comfortable working with them again. I appreciate that they bid on this and looking forward to working with them.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Trustee Steven?
Thank you. This may be for Director Trumbull. But will the funds to pay for this be part of the general fund? Or can it come out of the bond itself, since it's for the bond?
Theoretically, we could probably, probably use bond money for it. But we are using general fund, community improvement fund dollars for it, which ultimately is funded from the general fund. We transfer money over, if you recall, to the community improvement fund every year for various projects. And some of the things that are budgeted, and Greg, Director Homberger, could speak to this probably a little bit more. He's probably tracked this better. One of the things we looked at was how much did we spend in 2020 as far as roof maintenance? And some of the kind of contingency dollars that we set aside each year for projects that we aren't budgeting, things that just break, that we're not expecting to, that we put into the capital. And I think last year we budgeted somewhere $350,000 or something, and we didn't spend that. So we knew that we were carrying over some fund balance from 2020 into 2021 that was going to help offset those costs for the older stock for 2021.
So we're not taking it from, we're not stopping other projects.
Correct.
To do this. Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Director, at least one question to Andy to make it worthwhile for him to come out here tonight.
I'll, I'll ask Andy. So who would be the liaison between the township and Plant Moran Cressa?
Yes, that would, that would actually be me. I'm going to be your, so your day-to-day liaison between the township. And then also with all the other professional services, the architect, the contractor, anybody that's involved in implementing that work. Paul will be involved at, at, at some level, but I'm your day-to-day contact. And we, we do have other, other team members that will be involved as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Great, thank you. Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. Can I have a motion for request? Item G1, request budget amendment for the carryover of fiscal year 2020 open purchase orders to fiscal year 2021.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the following 2021 budget amendment increases for purchase order commitments carried over from 2020. General Fund 101, increase of $271,393. The Roads Fund 204, increase of $910,960. The Fire Fund 206, an increase of $1,1939,654. Police Fund 207, an increase of $253,349. Community Center Fund 208, increase of $6,079. Community Improvement Fund 246, increase of $520,341. Downtown Development Authority Fund 248, an increase of $7,400. Community Development Block Grant Fund 274, an increase of $311,857. Capital Projects Fund 401, an increase of $800,261. Capital Projects Road Fund 403, increase of $235,527. Water and Sewer Fund 529, increase of $484,103. And finally, Fleet Maintenance Fund 661, an increase of $53,466.
Support.
Thank you. The Finance and Budget Department is requesting to carry over prior year purchase orders not complete during the fiscal year 2020. This will require the board to approve an increase of the 2021 budget. Director Trumbull, do you have anything to add?
I'm only, just real quick, that all the different departments, take a look at their open purchase orders at the end up, well, into 2021. Back into 20, the purchase orders from 2020, they look at those in 2021 to see how much has not been spent on those and to determine what projects are still ongoing. Once they get back to finance, we consolidate all of the open purchase orders that they are requesting to be carried forward. And so we bring it forth as one RBA for the board. So if there's individual questions on specific purchase orders carried forward, I, I can do my best to answer them. But I'm sure all the directors here would be able to help answer those questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Clerk Segras, can I please have a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item, agenda item G2. Can I have a motion, please, on a receive and file the Planning Commission 2020 annual report?
Oh, brother. Phoebe, I just went down. Give me one moment. Do you want to read the summary while I'm getting it up?
You want me to read the, what's in for the motion, Michael?
Sure.
Madam Supervisor, I move to receive and file the Planning Commission 2020 annual report, which was adopted by the Planning Commission on February 1st, 2021, in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
The port.
Thank you. Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act 33 of 2008, requires the Planning Commission to make an annual written report to the township board concerning its operations and the status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the township board related to planning and development. At its meeting on February 1st, 2021, the Planning Commission approved the enclosed annual report. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
No, but just as a courtesy, I believe that when this was completed by the planning division, I sent this out about two weeks ago to everybody for you to take a look at.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any questions or comments? It was a very good report.
I'll, I'll just comment that there's a lot of good information in there. Some stuff they didn't realize, like the interesting numbers, even down to tree planting and pruning and things like that. I found it really interesting.
Very thorough. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G3. Can I have a motion, please, on a consider approval of special land use for Pure Development Delivery Station?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution for the approval of the special land use for Pure Development Delivery Station. Whereas, project sponsor has requested special land use approval for a warehousing and materials distribution center on use on the north side of Michigan Avenue between Dent Road and Back Road. And whereas, Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meet the criteria, meets the criteria of special land use approval in section 27.03C of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the special land use request for a warehousing and materials distribution center use. The tax parcel number is listed and the LIR zone portion of the tax parcel listed as the request meets the special land use criteria, the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided subject to specific design criteria to be addressed and corrected at the time of site plan. subject to specific design criteria to be addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review and that the special land use plans and traffic impact study are subject to approval by MDOT, including any required upgrade to the site and/or Michigan Avenue.
Support.
Thank you. The project sponsor proposes to construct a 183,130 square foot warehouse and material distribution center on seven contiguous parcels located on the north side of Michigan Avenue between Denton Road and Beck Road. The subject site is zoned LIR, light industrial research, which allows warehousing and material distribution centers via special land use. At its meeting in January 26, 2021, the Township Board of Trustees rezoned six of the subject parcels, LIR, from R3, R1, and RR at the request of the applicant. However, for one of these parcels, which is listed, only the east 896 feet was rezoned LIR and the remaining western part of the parcel adjacent to Denton Road remains R1. The project sponsor has concurrently applied for site plan review, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board when the site plan is deemed complete. At its meeting on February 1st, 2021, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use subject to conditions. So Director Smith, and do you have anything to add?
Um, I, no, not unless there's any questions in Mr. Sloan. I believe the petitioner is on as well. Uh, yeah, there should be at least one applicant from, uh, from Pure Development. It may be Rick Ratner or it may be Josh Mannion.
Mr. Rat has been promoted to panelist.
Okay.
Like Mr. Mannion, many.
Mannion also?
Why not?
All right, thank you. Summer, do you have anything to add, being on the Planning Commission?
Yes, um, when this came up at the Planning Commission, um, there were a lot of questions about traffic, about tree replacement. And I believe in the packet, the traffic study is included and there are a number of recommendations made. So I think as we get further along in the process, we'll see if Wayne County and MDOT adopt the recommendations on traffic. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Steven?
Yeah, it's quite an interesting project, especially the expanse of it and the number of entrance ways. And as Summer, you mentioned, I mean, I'm glad to hear the Planning Commission was looking at that because those are the things I'm usually concerned with. I, I gotta admit, I am not all the way through the traffic study yet because it's pretty lengthy. And I know MDOT will be involved because it's a state road. The concern I had was people wanting to go east, you know, and how's that going to work? Especially if it's the type of thing that has shift changes and a lot of people go leaving at the same time. Those Michigan lefts are, are, could back up quite a bit. So I'd be interested to see how the traffic study recommends we handle that. But other than that, um, the, the issue of trees, it sounds like there's some good things going on there as well. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Kate?
Thank you. Um, I see in the documentations that an eagle permit will be required where the building is proposed because of some wetland filling. And I'm just wondering, um, at what point does that permit need to be issued? Are we at that point yet or is, is that, that further down the process?
That's something that I'll defer to the applicant on. Oftentimes with industrial and commercial developments where there's a site plan involved, when it gets to the point of site plan, oftentimes it's subject to county and state permits because sometimes those county and eagle permits and other permits can take a while after site plan review. And sometimes a precondition of getting those permits is having a locally approved site plan. So sometimes it's a chicken and egg situation, but when we get to the point of site plan review, we may be in a position where that's a condition of, of that approval if it's granted. But I'll let the applicant speak to the more, the more specific items about those.
Okay. Mr. Ratner, you're on mute, just to let you know.
Thank you, sorry. And those, well, the Eagle permit is in process and we are going as quickly as we can with it. But as Patrick says, um, there are different conditions that have to be met and we have to make sure that all of the site issues are taken care of. So that is in, in process, which means we haven't waited, we're just doing concurrently and hope it gets done quickly. Josh Mannion is our engineer and he might have more to say, but as far as we're concerned, we're in process and moving along.
Yes, I can add just a little clarity to that. We've had a couple of meetings with MDOT to, and I'm sorry, Eagle, to talk through the process of the wetland permitting and we've submitted and as Rick mentioned, we're just working through the permitting process with them concurrently with site plan review.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Tanya.
Um, yeah, I just, I, I have gone through the, I probably have missed it somewhere. So is there like a timeline on when this project will be completed? Or is it all dependent on the permits available in that inspection?
For construction, is that, is that?
Yeah, no, when will this, like, when will this warehouse be operational?
Okay.
And like, is there a timeline for the project?
Yeah, I can speak to that. It is dependent on when, you know, we would get through the site plan approval process and when we get through all the permitting, you know, between MDOT and Eagle. You know, right now we're forecasting if all goes according to plan, would have, you know, permits sometime later this fall to start construction at that point.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Clerk Segras, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Thank you.
Orninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, G4, can I have a motion, please, to consider approval of renewing FOIA software?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the next request renewal expenditure and the total amount $14,392.15 with 75% being charged to Canton Police Department account number listed and the remaining to the Clerk's Office account number listed.
Support.
Thank you. Implementation, implementation of the next request software has proven to be an efficient, secure, and transparent way to manage record requests throughout the organization. All FOIA admins have concurred that they would like to continue the utilization of the software. Annual cost sharing is intended for the renewal. The Clerk's Office and Police Department will share the cost in the 75-25 split. FOIA Coordinator Anthony S. Mucker was able to navigate a discount due to delayed implementation caused by COVID-19. Clerk Segras, do you want to add anything to that?
I have nothing additional to add other than we, in 2019, we capped over 1,000 FOIAs in one year, which is like an ungodly amount of FOIAs. I don't know any other jurisdiction that handles that many. The predominant, you know, predominantly done by public safety, to be, to be honest, mostly police reports, but it's a lot. And we are very happy with the software, which allows us to track. It creates a log. Things are redacted. It create, it creates a a paper trail or a digital trail for who redacted what. So there's a kind of a chain of custody over every one of those records and why something was exempted from public record. It's a, it's a really good tool. You know, law requires, in our own philosophy as an organization, requires that we treat every single document as belonging to the general public and all that information they are entitled to, unless there is a good government reason not to provide it and that is enshrined in law somewhere. So from that starting point, it's really helpful for us to use this software, which helps us. As I said before, and make sure we have a good reason why we are removing something from the general public in response to an open request for information.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, great. Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Orninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And finally Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Can I please have a motion on the next item, G5? Consider request to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of 10 Dell laptops.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of 10 Dell Latitude 5424 rugged laptops from Dell LP in the amount of $22,840.40 utilizing drug forfeiture funds.
Support.
Thank you. The Police Department is requesting to waive the bidding process and purchase 10 Dell Latitude 5424 rugged laptops to be equipped with our Clemis Dispatch Investigations and Records Management software. Dell brand is required for compatibility with Oakland County Clemis products. By purchasing through Dell Premier, we are quoted in Oakland County pre-registered discounted rate of $22,840.40 for this total purchase. Drug forfeiture funds will be utilized for this purchase. Director Baud, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I'd just like to reiterate what essentially what you said there, the per unit price there is quite more, quite considerable compared of what we could go and buy at like a Costco or something, but it's based on the security of the computer and the pre-negotiated price. Our IT department has helped us understand and through the Clemis system, it's protected information. There's a lot of information that flows through these laptops that need to be protected and that's why the cost is so considerable comparatively.
Thank you. Any questions? Great. Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Orninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Snyderman.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, G6, can I please hear a motion to consider approving a one-year contract renewal with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group Incorporated and associated amendments to the 2021 police and fire budgets?
I will do this in the form of one motion, if it pleases Supervisor. I move to, Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a one-year contract renewal for police and fire legal services with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group LLC in the amount of $30,000 and to approve the attached budget amendment to police and fire 2021 budgets.
Support.
Thank you. The police and fire departments are requesting to renew their contract with the Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group Incorporated for legal advice on administrative and operational issues, department policies, and legal update training. The contract renewal is based on 192 hours per year and is paid in monthly installments for a total cost of $30,000. In addition, the departments are requesting amendments to the police and fire budgets for this purchase. Director Bao or Stockline, would you like to add anything?
I could start for the police. This has been an incredible upgrade for officers internally to have monthly updates legal that are based and not on Michigan law, the Sixth Circuit, and the US Supreme Court. Pretty much we've seen a better level of service to our community and as of April 1st, you're going to see a paradigm shift in how we handle police services based on legislation. It's going to be critical to have this constant training going through our roll calls with our frontline employees. So it's very useful for our police department.
Thank you. Director Stockline, did you want to add anything?
No, I would just say the same as Director Baugh. We more or less use him for our policy review and some of our ongoing, you know, litigation. So, I mean, in the end, he gives us a lot of good advice and, you know, he's an expert in the field. So it helps to have that in our hands whenever we need it, so.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Trustee Steven?
Um, yeah, thanks. It's good to hear that because I remember doing this a couple of years ago and it's good to hear that it was useful, as useful as you guys thought it was going to be. So I appreciate that feedback.
I think just to provide a face, if you remember back in August, we had a study session, that's the attorney that we use.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk Segras, please take roll on the motion.
Orninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item G7, can I please hear a motion to consider accepting two justice assistance grants and an associated amendment to the 2021 police budget?
Madam Supervisor, I move to do this in the form of one motion, if I may. I move to approve the acceptance of two justice assistance grants for specified equipment through the US Department of Justice, including a 2018 JAG in the amount of $8,704 and a 2019 JAG in the amount of $8,518 and to approve the attached amendment to the 2021 police budget.
Support. Thank you. The Canton Police Department has been awarded two justice assistance grants for specific equipment through the US Department of Justice. JAG as listed below, the number is for surveillance equipment in the amount of $8,704 in JAG. The number listed is for tasers in the amount of $8,518. A budget amendment to the 2021 police budget is included in this request, should the board choose to accept these grants. Director Baud, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further. This, if you see with the dates, it seems a little unusual, but it flows through the county and it takes a little bit of time. So we're just asking the permission to receive the funds and use them.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Trustee Kate?
I just want to say thank you to Director Baugh because that was what I was going to ask about, was the time lag there.
Right. I, I don't, not certain why it took so long, but this money flows through the government and goes through the county, made it back to us. So we're just asking to use the money as you see in the RBA.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Great. Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Orninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G8, can I have a motion to consider approving payment to the 2020-21 licensing and support renewal for the Priority Dispatch System?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the, to approve the payment of the 2020-2021 annual licensing and support renewal for the Priority Medical Dispatch System in the amount of $10,240 to Priority Dispatch Corporation.
Support.
Thank you. The Fire Department is requesting approval for payment of the 2020-21 annual licensing and support renewal for the Priority Medical Dispatch System in the amount of $10,240 to Priority Dispatch Corporation. Director Stockline, do you have anything to add?
Uh, this is an important piece of software for us. You know, a year and a half ago, we were still flipping cards and dispatch to get to have our, our dispatchers find what medical runs were going on and give that advice to those people on scene. And this computer program really brings it up fast and also is a big part of our accreditation. So we believe it's helping cut down on our, I shouldn't say we believe, we know it's cutting down on our response times because they were able to get that information and get us dispatched to it quickly without asking too many questions. because they were able to get that information and get us dispatched to it quickly without asking too many questions that aren't pertinent to getting us out there. So it's a great piece of equipment and helps with our accreditation and I believe that this is actually a little bit past due to that why it says 2021, so you'll see another one later in this year. That kind of lost in the shuffle between the transition with the director. So we're a little behind on this, so you'll see another one of these later in the year. So we're just getting caught up, but the the cost is ten thousand dollars per year.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrest, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G nine, can I have a motion, please, to consider sale of Canton property and authorize Supervisor Graham Hudek to sign all documents necessary to close on the sale?
Madam Supervisor, I move. I can't accept a letter of intent from Anna Rodriguez and authorize yourself, the supervisor of Graham Hudek, to sign the formal purchase agreement and any other documents necessary to complete the sale of the parcel located west of Willard Street and to the north of the ITC corridor.
Support.
Thank you. On November thirteenth, 2020, Canton's Economic Development Manager received a letter of intent from Anna Rodriguez at twelve seventeen North Willard, offering fifty-six hundred dollars for approximately point one-one-seven acres west of Willard Street and immediately north of the ITC corridor parcel is listed. Ms. Rodriguez has taken care of the property for the last thirteen years and intends to continue. The letter of intent has been reviewed by Kristen Kolb, and should the board approve the letter of intent, a formal purchase agreement will be drafted then signed by Supervisor Graham Hudek. Hi, we have, this is not unusual. We've done this before. I don't know, Kristen, do you want to add anything to this?
Um, as I indicated in my email back to trustee Ganguly, we've sold a number of these lots that the township had purchased years ago with the idea that Morton Taylor Road may be extended south of Salts. That has not come to fruition and the county has no plans to continue Morton Taylor, so the township over the past three or four years has been selling off these old platted lots to adjacent existing homes, so these folks can, you know, enlarge their backyards. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Summer?
Um, I know that we've sold quite a few of these. Do we know how many are left or if there are any left?
I think there's probably quite a few. That's a long, Willard is quite a long street. Don't, Kristen Thomas may be keeping track of how many are left. But it certainly seems like words getting around to the neighbors that, you know, this is available to them. And so, you know, over the past years, we've seen more and more requests coming through.
Yeah, I know we've gotten quite a few.
Thank you, Clerk Segras.
Yeah, I just, um, I kind of would like to have a little bit of a philosophy on what we're going to do with that area. I know in the past, the parcels on the other side of Willard Street, we were comfortable letting the homeowners kind of acquire those lots. They were in between the ITC corridor. Or they would, they backed up to that, yeah, that abandoned kind of right, well, it's a right of way, the Morton Taylor right of way there. Now, these parcels are further down on Willard, and this is the west side of Willard. And I was unaware of this until recently, looking at a township-owned property map. But the township owns a very large portion of of land right there that we received when, I believe, when the, I think, is it Carriage Hills? Is that the name of the subdivision that was being developed? And I don't know if that has to do with whatever PDD we went, we agreed to with them. But we've got a large swath of forest right there that I don't know that we have a strategy. I don't know if there's a conservation easement over it, and I believe this parcel backs up to that. So if we sell it to the lady, she could clear the trees. She could do whatever, you know, whatever within the, within the planning ordinance or zoning ordinance she wants to do with the property. But if we ever decide that we want to, I don't know, put a trail back there, this could very easily be included with that in some form of a, of a passive forest park too. So I guess for me, it's, I don't know how many of those little small slivers, those like point one acre slots we own that back up to that larger parcel of property that I believe we also own. But I think like for me, I'd like to know if it does back up to that, to that property and then to if, if, you know, what, I mean, we get, we get fifty-six hundred dollars, it's a good amount of money. I do see that goes into the Community Improvement Fund. I was just kind of curious as to why that fund was selected instead of maybe like a parks, or maybe like the tree, you know, the tree fund or or something we would set aside for maybe since it's public land, we would be selling, maybe set it aside for acquiring or for paying for future parks, which is something we've done in the past with previous sales of property.
Okay, thank you. I mean, there's option, if anyone wants, you know, an option to table, if you want more information. Is there anyone else that has questions or comments?
Um, I would just say that I agree with Michael. Looking at the map, the map in the packet was very narrow in, in what it showed. It just shows the, the house and the land behind it. But, yeah, this is, if you look on Google Maps, part of the big forest that's to the west of Floatin Park. I don't know, Greg, if you know, if we own how much of that forest we own. But, um, yeah, Willard is really the only road that goes into that forest from the south, and it does not make it all the way to Salts. I know that this parcel probably was going to be part of an extension of Coring Road that stopped in the middle of the ITC corridor. So, and it's probably not going to continue. So, uh, yeah, I would be interested in a greater strategy for that forest, depending on how much of it we own. And if it's contiguous to the, to Floatin Park, potentially we could provide a more trail experience, you know, connecting it with the ITC trail and doing things in the forest.
I seem to recall that part of that property, because we had an individual approach us several years ago about buying a piece that's, I think, directly adjacent to Floatin or south of Floatin. But it's within, I forget, it's very wet. I don't know if there's wetlands there or if there's a drainage corridor, but we told them it could not be developed.
Yeah, there is a green drain. I see that goes across just to the north of this property. But it's only into the, into the forest just a little bit from the south, the, the green drain, the other, it might be another, yeah, there's Fellows Creek runs through this property, this forest as well.
Yeah, I, I seem to remember that coming up before a few years ago, when a question came up about putting a trail through there and that it's very wet. My son used to go play there. He used to disappear and he would come home soaking wet and muddy, so I'm very familiar with that area. But I don't know if a trail would work there, but, I mean, it's worth, maybe it's worth investigating. I don't know.
I don't know that the sale of this property would prohibit us from doing stuff. This is a very small piece of that forest. Unless it's a thing about precedent about, I don't know if this is the first one that we've sold north of the ITC trail. Like Michael said, most of them have been south and by more along the power station. So, um, I, I mean, I'm, I'd be interested to get more information and, and wait two weeks unless you think, Kristen, Kristen, that would be a problem with the sale or anything like that.
Um, you know, Kristen Thomas has been the one speaking with the property owner, so I, I don't know how urgent it is, like the Super Bowl, and then the RBA, this property owner has been maintaining it anyways. Right. Just for the board's information, prior to Tim Foss retiring a little, a couple of years ago, he gifted me with an Excel spreadsheet, which Tim loved, that has a list of all the properties that
No, we lost her.
Oh. Well, she was talking about a spreadsheet that I have a copy of and I can forward to everyone. Um, Jade, do you want to pick up? Say anything?
Um, not on the spreadsheet, but just, I think that Clerk Segras had sent an email in regards to this, and so I was inquiring on some information today in regards to that property and investigating some more with the history on that. So I will be circling back with, with both the supervisor and the clerk in regards to that and working with engineering. Because I believe all that conversation happened before my time, but I'm going to get caught up right here real quick.
Thank you.
I think that property is that you're referring to, Director Smith, is to the east of Floatin Park on the other side.
Oh, right. That was along that, the
On the east side that goes
Yeah.
All right. Dell Drain. Oh, yeah, don't confuse the green drain.
That goes over the
Diane, you had something to say?
No, I was just going to say it's probably a good idea that we explore a little of this going forward before we sell off more, if there is an area that we can make a, a trail or that.
Okay. Okay. And sorry, Kristen said her laptop died. I do have Amy. Amy just had her hand up also, just to give some more information. Amy? You're on mute, just to let you know, Amy Houston. Amy?
Yeah, I did. I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well. Clerk Segras?
Yeah, I just, um, that's a unique spot in Canton right there, and I had emailed, obviously, a couple of folks about property to, to the east of that area. One, it's, it's Floatin Park, which is named after long-serving Canton Township Clerk, John Floatin, so keep in mind, as we create more, more parks, who we name them after. Clerks make for excellent park names, but
They go to the bottom of the list after one's been named.
Sorry. On the other, and then what's beautiful about that park is it's, it's an active park, but it's got a really cool passive feature to the back of it with those, that wetland reclamation that was done there in partnership with ITC and with the Lower Rouge or the Alliance of Rouge River Communities. You know, and it's super cool. And we had talked, we had walked some property to the east there a while ago. Didn't really make sense at the time to acquire it and bring it into that, that network. I had recently asked more questions about it, so that was what Director Smith was talking about. And then also paying attention to that other forest to the west of that area, I thought, oh, that's, that's interesting. So that's kind of what got me sparked into this area. And then when I saw this parcel, I initially thought it was one of the Willard parcels that we've already kind of like sold, so I, it didn't rise, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't come up to me last, last week, but then this week, you know, as I was flipping through again, I saw, I said, wait a minute, there's a forest behind this one. I've never seen it. It's on the other side of Willard. So then I, I said, okay. That's what made me think that maybe it would be appropriate to table this idea and until in light of the work we did last week, two weekends ago, where we talked about some of our goals around the healthy ecosystems is one of the goals. We talked about trying to, trying to preserve as much of our natural green space as possible. And, and, and so I thought to myself like, okay, if this fits into that area, do you combine this with the other parcel and just put an age of preserve and then the lady can still continue to access it and maintain it if she wants to? But it's a part of something bigger. Or do you sell it and just have like a smaller little thing there? I, I didn't know, and I didn't know what the future land use for that area could be. My assumption is that it was given to the, to the township for sure because it's probably wetland. I mean, I'm sure it was wetland mitigation. That's why most property in dense parts of Canton haven't been developed is because of their wetlands, because they're wet. And it doesn't make economic sense to develop them. So, but as far as putting a trail in, that's a whole difference. It's a horse of different color altogether. So that was kind of what, what got me to throw a wrench in this one here. If it's not pressing, I would, I would propose that we table it. In fact, if it would please the supervisor, I would make a motion that we table, table this agenda item to be discussed at a future date.
Okay, motion made and supported. Clerk Segras, can you please take the roll call on that motion?
Does anybody want to debate that at all? I don't know.
They all raised their hands. No.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrest, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Thank you. Motion to table has passed. Next, next item on the agenda is G ten. Can I please have a motion to consider organizational assessment of the township's structure and an associated amendment to the 2021 general fund?
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the awarding of an organizational assessment contract to Novak Consulting Group, forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Thank you. The Canton Township Board is seeking a professional consultant to assist with an organizational assessment of the township's departments in order to strengthen the way we, the organization serves the public. The goal of this engagement is to identify opportunities for improved efficiency and effectiveness of operations, staffing structure, technology, processes, and policies based upon the township's board's strategy, goals, and objectives. This assessment will exclude police and fire departments. The approach specifically addresses the township's needs and goals and will provide a high-level organizational scan and assessment. The assessment involves soliciting and collecting information on the township's responsibilities, resources, requirements, and results from employees in order to identify possible organizational and operational revisions with an associated roadmap to implement positive change. We are asking the board to waive the bidding process and award the contract to the Novak Consulting Group. The Novak Consulting Group works solely for public sector organizations and has been successful in completing such assessments locally for cities such as Rochester Hills and Saline, as well as strategic objectives for Ann Arbor, Ferndale, in addition to a multitude of local governments nationwide. The total value of the contract for 2021 is forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and this amount is available in the general fund. The evaluation will take three months from kickoff. As I am the presenter, I think that explains a lot of it. It was also attached to your package, it's a proposal. So are there any questions on this one?
More comment, Madam Supervisor. I don't think I've been through something like this, and this is my third term on this board, and I think that, so that means it's probably been well over a decade since we've looked at our organization and how it operates. In the corporate world, this seems to be done almost every year these days. Of course, they have a lot of money, so it's understandable why we don't do that. But with changing, the changing world, changing priorities in our community and the greater global community, I think it's smart to do right now, and I'm looking forward to this effort.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Foster.
I know, um, they've done a lot of work in some other communities in Michigan. Have we had conversations with any folks at those communities to see how the process went in working with the Novak Group?
Clerk Segras, you had spoken to Ferndale?
Yeah, so just a little bit of backstory, the, the impetus for this was a, was a conversation I had And the impetus for this was a private, was a conversation I had with Canton Township resident and city manager Ferndale. Joseph Gao Shoj, and um, in that process, we were just kind of discussing the, the coming. The coming year, and um, I was just essentially getting some advice from him about the township moving forward and things along. And that nature, and we were discussing um, doing a strategic plan, strategic visioning. At which point he had acknowledged that he had just worked with Julie Novak, the principal for Novak Group. And that she had helped them do their strategic vision, their strategic plan and had. Tied that into their um, upper level evaluations and that she had recommended, that he had recommended. Her for um, the new administration in Oakland County, to Oakland County. The new Oakland County Executive and that they were using her. Um, he also said that she, they just left Ann Arbor, I believe. Um, but said, um, sung the praises, didn't um, discussed kind of like, they um. Did not do the organizational assessment. They did strategic vision and then tied that into some long-term financial planning. Along with the evaluation of directors and um, and that upper kind of echelon of employees. That to tie all of that stuff back into their strategic vision and the goals that they had, had done. We chose obviously to go with the look see for the purposes of the strategic vision. And part of that was budget driven, but also there were with Canton groups as well. But we've obviously established those goals at the board level. We will move into um, the leadership team level to analyze those goals. And then this will be about implementing, implementing that and or, or structuring the, the overall. Looking at the organization and seeing how it fits into that. The goals that we've kind of established and will be moving forward with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, great. Thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Kenguli.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrest eye Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Last item on the agenda, G eleven. Can I have a motion to consider approval of purchase order increase to Mid American Group for the Fellows Creek, Creek Golf Club Pond Dredging?
I'm supervisor, I move to approve an increase to purchase order, the purchase order number listed for the Fellows Creek Golf Club Pond Dredging. To Mid American Group at eight four seven five Port Sunlight Road, Newport, Michigan, forty one six six in the amount of thirty six thousand seven seventy four dollars and thirty two cents. With funds to be paid from the account number listed, capital improvement plan.
Support.
Thank you. For the recommendation of the capital improvement plans team, we are requesting a purchase order increase. P O is listed in the total amount of thirty six thousand seven hundred seventy four dollars thirty two cents to fund the extra cost of project. Two thousand thirteen Fellows Creek Golf Club Pond Dredging. The remaining balance of thirty six thousand seven hundred seventy four dollars thirty two cents for this project will be paid using extra bond proceeds. From completed projects from the account listed. On October thirteenth, twenty twenty, the board approved to award a contract to Mid American Group in the amount of one hundred fifty eight thousand, which included thirty thousand dollars allowance. For unforeseen conditions due to construction being underwater. Approximately five feet of sediment was removed from the pond in accordance with base bid of a hundred fifty eight thousand. Once the sediment was removed, an inspection of the underwater intake pipe system was performed through a dive operation. During the pipe inspection process, Mid American Group discovered the thirty year old corrugated steel pipe has significant rust and deterioration. The deterioration is significant enough that the old pipe can no longer be used for water intake purposes. To fix this, a smaller pipe will need to be inserted into the larger pipe as a sleeve to run the water through. In addition, based on depth and shape of the lagoon, it has been recommended to extend the pipe by fifty five additional feet to allow for better water flow intake. Photos were provided in attachment A. Director Hohmberger, do you have anything to add?
Uh, that's a pretty thorough description. We explored all of our options, including uh, really, there was three options with this. Since, number one, since we weren't able to inspect the pipe until we were down in there and having dredge out the sediment. There was no way to know the condition of the pipe. Um, or the intake pipe there. Yeah, so our options are to not irrigate the course, which is probably not a realistic option for us. To option B is in, uh, to insert the sleeve or option C would be to completely remove the old sleeve and add our old pipe. And I'll put a completely new pipe in there, which would be at least double, not triple the cost of doing it this way.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Trustees, um, Kate.
Greg, how often is the pipe inspected? And I understand it couldn't be inspected um, until you were, until it was dredged. But like normally, how often would a, a pipe like this be inspected?
Typically, we don't inspect things like that. I don't know, maybe Director Smith has some. Idea on some type of inspection that should be done. This is the first time we've looked at it and thrown Director Smith into something he, he. Much about other than the fact that he uh, deals with pipes a lot more than I do in leisure services.
Well, I, I, in, in, I would have to get with DPW, but I believe that this is the, this kind of pipe. And, and what's going on on the golf course is a little bit different than the pipes that we inspect that are dealing with water mains and sewer mains. So I think that the, the maintenance program or the maintenance schedule would be completely different. I mean, I could see why uh, maybe the golf course irrigation wouldn't be as inspected as much, but it doesn't mean that there shouldn't be probably a program put in place. But um, it wouldn't, it would not fall in line with our uh, regular water and sewer inspections.
Yeah, that certainly wouldn't be something that his team would normally do. But we could look to um, have a inspection program for this pipe put in place.
Yes, absolutely. We could absolutely partner in that and get, we have the equipment to do it, so we could absolutely put something together like that.
Yeah, typically you would um, I, I, one of the challenges with the location and the way that this intake is set up is that. I've been told is they weren't able to run a camera down from the top end because of the location of the. The, the pumps. Something with the impeller being in the way. So the only way that they were able to run a camera was from the bottom end up, so. With the, the sediment being there, they weren't able to do the inspection. Out the sediment.
Okay, do we have other pipes like this that might need to be inspected at this point?
Potentially at the golf court or at Pheasant Run. I can, I can find out what the status is on those.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Trust, trustee Stephen, yeah?
Yep, quick question. Um, the drone pictures were cool. And um, the question that it brought up is, I see something called the pond dredging sediment retention. So is that stuff we took out from there and what are we going to do with it?
Yes, that is stuff that was taken out and that's going to be just used around the golf course. As kind of a, it's fantastic um, for growing new plants. So it's very rich um, sediment.
Great. Interesting, thanks.
Good compost. Any other questions or comments? Michael.
On an unrelated note, I did take jack sledding over at Fellows Creek uh, over the weekend and we had a lovely time.
You met par three. Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Clerk Seagres, can you please take a mo, a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Kenguli.
Hi.
Seagrest eye Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Do I see any hands for public comment? I think they're mostly our group except Julie. Any questions? Okay, any um, statements or comments from the directors or staff?
I'd just like to uh, thank all the staff that helped us over this past week with the COVID um, stuff. I know, I know that uh, there was a lot of people involved, um, employees from all parts of the township. So I just wanted to make sure that we thank all of them uh, for their help and, and getting those citizens. I know that you said that at the beginning of the meeting, but uh, it's really important that we acknowledge all the people that have put time into that.
Yes, definitely. The staff members were great. I still get calls today and emails saying how great they were and how they helped people through the maze and help them sign up. To people who are very frustrated. Thank you. No, thanks to the staff. They did a great job to uh, plan an event in three days and. It's quite a feat inside. Thank you. Any other staff or directors? About board members. Oh, sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Maybe we should just make one more thing um, for the public. Just make sure that um, if you do not have an appointment, that uh, you don't show up on Thursday or Friday to the um, event. Because um, we won't be able to, to handle the extra volume and we'll have to turn you away. So um, always show up if you have an appointment and make sure that you only show up uh, ten minutes prior to the appointment as well.
Yes, thank you. And to let people know, ninety percent of our seniors in the towers that live in assisted living are vaccinated. We're looking at some of our other houses that still need vaccination, and so we're looking at um, how we can get there with Wayne County. And we might even be helping to get some of the people off our waitlist very soon. We're hoping to. Thank you. Any other comments from the staff or directors? Board members? I just want to let everybody know, um, to save the date, so March third is um, basically the state of the township. So it's in partnership with the Canton Chamber. You should have probably all gotten an email from the Canton Chamber. They've sent that a couple of times. That's going to be from noon to two. It's going to be virtual via Zoom. And we'll be talking about what's happening in the township over twenty twenty. Most of it is basically focusing on, the theme is what the township did during COVID. And how the organizational department stepped up. So that's basically the theme of what we're going to see with some guests, some elected officials also. Any questions or?
So no lunch.
Sorry, bring your lunch. Make sure you mute. Yes, you could eat lunch, just mute, so we don't hear you eating your lunch. Anything else? Okay, great. Yeah, a lot of people are enjoying the snow, so I mean, it was a little warm today, but uh, go ahead.
Tell you, I um, I recently found a literacy test from Alabama from nineteen sixty five. It was something that was um, used to take, uh, you know, to deny essentially black Americans their right to vote. And um, I tried taking the test and I pride myself in knowing a substantial amount about America and civics. And my God, that was one of the hardest tests I've ever had to take in my entire life. One of the questions was at the uh, at the founding of, or at the, at the establishment of the U S Constitution. Which, which colony had the most electors in Congress? And I thought to myself, who knows that answer? It sounds like something I would know, but I was just like, anyway, when I, when I've, I've, I've asked that, we might um. Create a form on the website as a test to like, and to promote, A, to talk about as an educational component about like uh, Jim Crow South and about like. Essentially, the, you know, voting pre, the um, Voting Rights Act in America. But um, also as like a, you know, see if you're smart enough to pass the literacy test. You know, the benefit is, is if I had walked in to vote, they wouldn't make me take the test because that's not how institutionalized racism works, right? But um, man, it was a hard test to take. Yeah, so that's something we might be adding to the clerk's website.
The test?
The test, yeah. If you guys, if you want to try to take it, no cheating, no cheating. You gotta try to do it without uh, cheating.
Well, that's appropriate for Black History Month, definitely, for the end of February almost.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we'll get it up in time, but. It's a lot, there's seventy questions. Yeah, yeah, in the polling place, they just hand you this, you know, seventy page questionnaire. If you studied and you passed it, they still wouldn't let you vote.
Yeah, right.
So.
Said, wow. Be interesting to see. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Well, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Support.
Thank you, clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Kenguli.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrest eye Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Great. Have a good night, everybody. Stay safe.